Call to order, the regular session of the Beaumont City Council and the Beaumont Financing Authority at 6:10. Can you take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Orozco is absent. Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
So we'll start with a report out from closed session?
Okay. There was a late-breaking item that was added to the agenda prior to closed session, and that was a result of a request for defense and indemnity being received by former city attorney Joe Aclofy through his council requesting that the city defend and indemnify him in the lawsuit that the city filed against him. And that was, our office received it, I believe, yesterday, so it arose after the posting of the agenda. We have a short period of time within which to respond to the request. And so the council voted to, all four council members voted to add it to the agenda, which is permitted under the Brown Act, where it arose after the posting of the agenda required immediate attention. And so we did discuss that item, and the item added to the agenda was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.9D1. One case, City of Beaumont versus Aclofy et al., Riverside, case number RIC 1712036. And the council did, there was reportable action, the council considered the request for defense and indemnity, and there was a motion by councilmember Laura, a second by Mayor White, to deny the request for defense and indemnity. And the vote was Laura to deny the request, White to deny the request, Carroll to deny the request, and Martinez to deny the request. So the request is denied. The second item on the agenda was conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.9D1, 2 and/or 3 regarding potential litigation, legal proceedings by the Preserve LLC to enforce the stay in the Preserve LLC's Chapter 11 case. Case number 608BK 23006BB. And there was no reportable action taken on that item. Item 3, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.9D1 and/or 2 and/or 3, workers' compensation case number COBM-0022. One potential case. There was reportable action on that item. And there was a first made by councilmember Laura to settle the case in the amount of There was a second by Vice Mayor Carroll, and the vote was, in favor of the motion, was Laura, yes, Carroll, yes, Martinez, yes, and White, yes. So the motion passed. The fourth item, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.9D1, 2 and/or 3, workers' compensation case number COBM-002883. One potential case, and there was reportable action on that item. There was a first by councilmember Laura to approve a settlement in the amount of $23,345. A second by councilmember Martinez, and the vote was Laura, yes, Martinez, yes, Vice Mayor Carroll, yes, and Mayor White, yes. And so the motion passed approving the settlement. And then the last item, item 5, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 7B1. The employee being evaluated, city manager, there was not enough time to get to that item, and so that item will be dealt with at the end of the agenda, but the public is entitled to stay, and the council will report out after that item is concluded in closed session, and the public is entitled to be here if it wishes to be here. And that's your report out.
Thank you. Let's move to the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Parton, how would you like to lead us?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's move on to the approval adjustments to the agenda. I'd like to make an adjustment to the agenda with consensus from council. I'd like to poll item number 1. I want to tell you first off, Mr. Parton, I appreciate you bringing this to us in a timely manner. I understand that we are, we have 180 days to get this consultant hired and a report filed with the SEC, and that starts from the day of the order, which would have been 30 days ago or approximately so. We're at 150, and I understand that an RFP process could be lengthy and put us in a position not to have, to be under the gun time-wise. But I think that this is important enough that we should at least take a step back, and if the rest of the council agrees with me, I'd like to suggest that using the scope that's in the SEC order, you develop an RFP if that's required, but not an RFP that we need to review, because it's going to be the scope of the SEC order. So we already understand what that is. And then ask that you bring back to us within two council meetings more proposals than just a single one for us to select from. I'm suggesting that the RFP process be as it always is, which is you seek proposals, and then you and staff evaluate the candidates, and then you bring recommendations back to council. And I think if we do this in 30 days, you bring us back a couple more for us to choose from, I think it puts us in a better position to make a more informed decision. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No. Second, do you need a second?
No, I think we're just a consensus to poll and give staff direction. Is there anyone asking to speak on item 1?
Yes.
Okay, if they'd like to speak on item 1, I can open a public hearing for that. Even though I polled it, I still, they need the opportunity to speak to that. So open the public hearing at 6:13.
Judy Bingham?
Sorry, 6:18.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Thank you for pulling that. My question was, why didn't council demand the backup documents be put on the agenda? In order to comply with the SEC orders to maintain records and produce documents that are not forged, the city must establish a finance department with a qualified finance director and at least three more accountants. The city must submit financial statements and bond certificates of completion that are not forged for the purpose of obtaining money. A person must be designated to ensure compliance to stop the city staff and council from pretending they are not responsible for their actions. An independent consultant is supposed to submit a report on the city's compliance to the SEC undertakings 21 through 27. The independent consultant isn't needed until the end, after the city has gotten itself into compliance with the undertakings. The SEC gave the city time to allow, to follow the state open public bid laws. California Public Contract Code 10353.5 must maintain an office in the state and is authorized to do business in the state. So I understood Gilmore and Bell were out of state.
Maybe, I have a couple of questions, I think, for Mr. Pinkney. Most of Mrs. Bingham's concerns are items that we're hiring a consultant to advise us on whether or not we are in compliance with Finance Committee rules, whether or not we have the proper staff in place, and whether we're doing the proper processes. So it's something that we could use their guidance as we move towards that final position, correct? I mean, it's not, they're going to come in at the last minute and review everything we've done and say yes or no, and then we move from there. Is that correct? I mean, is it an ongoing guidance?
Yeah, I mean, there were comments that were made that were accurate interspersed with inaccurate information in our comments. And what the, you know, the order, the cease and desist order says what it says, and we have it, I have a copy in front of me, and we intend to comply with it within the timeframes that have been set out in the order. The contract code provisions that are being referred to, obviously, any law firm or consulting firm is going to be licensed to do business in California that's presented to you.
Okay.
That's not really an issue.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any comments, we'll move on. So I would call for the adjournment of the Beaumont Finance Authority at 6:21. And we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I do have some.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Well, let me ask you, should I have closed the Beaumont Finance Authority when the public comments are before the adjournment in the schedule of the agenda?
Which item are you referring to? I'm sorry.
Well, before item 1, and there's a public comment period, which is general comments. Since we did this as part of the adjustment.
Yeah, so we kind of, as part of the adjustment to the agenda, we kind of jumped ahead, so you may want to go back up and pick up where you were after the adjustments.
Yeah, and I'm glad we did that, because I do have a conflict of interest to disclose on item number... Where's the Loma Linda storm drain item? Item number 14. I am currently a member of the Solera Homeowners Association because I own a piece of property there.
No.
Sun Lakes. I don't know why I keep saying Solera. Maybe it's wishful thinking, I don't know. Sun Lakes Homeowners Association. So I will be recusing myself from that item when that comes up. All right. And for the record, I do not live in Banning. I live in Beaumont. Okay, so now we'll move on to public comments. We'll open that at 6:24.
Anita Worthing?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Can you hear me?
Cheers.
Okay. On each one of your podiums and your chairs there, I have two things that I left at my chair, so I'll be right back. Over at Four Seasons, we have a very active neighborhood watch, and each year we have a celebration for our law enforcement and our officials. So each of you have been invited to our Neighborhood Watch National Night Out. Normally, it is the first Tuesday in August, but we always have it at a different time. So ours is the Wednesday, October 11th, at 5:30 PM for Podluck and 6 o'clock with the program. We always invite the chief, and we have done so, and he has responded, and so we invite all of you to come. So it's an opportunity to say thank you very much for all the work that the law enforcement does, as well as the people in the city. I want to give a special thank you today on behalf of Four Seasons for Detective Galletta that has actually been working with us on some issues that we have, and for Lieutenant Kesar and Sergeant Ramos. So of course, in any place you have some concerns, and they have been very, very helpful, and we want to say thank you very much. We also want to say thank you for the Beaumont PD, for the police escort that we had on Friday, Friday, September, the third Friday in each September is POW MIA. So that's for veterans that are lost, and we ask for escort in Beaumont. Thank you very much for doing that for us. The second thing that I wanted to do is say thank you to Richard Horner. Richard Horner has really, really, really taken it on the chin for some things that are happening over at Four Seasons, and he has been absolutely wonderful. He met with us again today, he met with us last week, and we just want to say thank you to him. And Tim Chavez came over today to see some things that we have. But Richard Horner is absolutely wonderful, and I know he's a part of Beaumont. So thank you so much for all of the help that you've given us over at Four Seasons.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I just turned in to the city clerk. I'm aware that Wilmington Trust is now handling the bond accounts, and so I want all those. And also, I've been asking, as Mr. Martinez knows, for over two years for the Union Bank bond fund accounts, or bank statements, whatever you want to call it. Mr. Pinkney has refused to give them to me because of, because Urban Logic's account numbers were on there, something he made up, I don't know what it is. But I want them, and I want them soon. I am tired of waiting for those. Mr. Pinkney was hired as a city attorney without a public bid as required by California state law. The lawsuits and claims were removed from the city council agenda to hide the city's liabilities. Pinkney and the city council stated that the claims and lawsuits would be disclosed at every second council meeting. But as we all see by the agenda, that was a lie. When Pinkney does disclose a list of lawsuits and claims, it is not complete. But this council never requires their staff to follow state or federal law. Hiding lawsuits and claims is yet another omission of material fact in order to mislead. I never thought I'd see an attorney dirtier than Joe Aclofy, and I can't believe he had the nerve to ask that taxpayers pay to defend him. Mayor White was told to his face, the new Beaumont is just like the old Beaumont, but even Aclofy didn't try to hide the claims and lawsuits. The City of Beaumont must list their claims and lawsuits for full disclosure like any other government agency would. If they had nothing to hide, they would, they were being transpired.
Do we have any other speakers?
One more.
Okay.
Ron Roy?
I have handed out for you to look at. Think big, think big, having a think big moment here, okay? Am I the only one who's been thinking about this? Jeff Bezos has put out an RFP for all comers to demonstrate why their city would be a good fit for Amazon's new HQ2. Now, you might think that Bezos already made up his mind, and that might be true. But I believe it's foolish for us to try to read his mind, just as it's foolish for us not to submit a proposal for Beaumont as the best location for Amazon's new HQ2. It would be a lot easier for us if Beaumont did not qualify. But what's scary is, as I read each requirement, Beaumont fails to drop off the list. It just keeps qualifying and qualifying, it stays on the list. And so, for example, look at the MSA requirement. Beaumont falls within the Riverside, San Bernardino metro, which is the 13th largest MSA in the United States, with over 4.5 million people. We qualify. And then combined with LA and San Diego's MSAs, all without an hour and a half drive from City Hall, that gives us a population of over 18 million people. You know, that's not shabby. And it includes millions of qualified workers, colleges, industries, that Bezos needs relatively close to his proposed HQ2. Another checklist is the stable and business-friendly environment. Our job growth, wages, and salaries have outpaced the state and the rest of Southern California. Our employment is very diverse, and we have the thing, I think, is a sleeper asset, affordable commercial land and housing. There's other items on the checklist. Urban or suburban locations with the potential to attract and retain strong technical talent. Communities that think big and creatively when considering locations and real estate options. I've been saying think big, I know you can too. And so, and just for another thing, if you look at the airports, just dig into that, our airports, it's incredible how much we qualify. You would not believe with the international airports in San Bernardino, it's just unbelievable. Okay, a lot on the checklist. Okay, so what have we been doing? We've been more resistant. So by being more resistant and discriminating in how our vacant land has been developed, we've allowed ourselves to have quality housing and larger swaths of affordable strategically located land for Bezos to consider for his HQ and over 50,000 high-paying jobs. And although there's a checklist, I think the factor that would win him over is our aesthetics. Now, if we don't win the bid, so what? Perhaps someone better will come along who appreciates what we have to offer, someone better. And we all know who that is. We know who that is. Okay, so I appreciate your time. Please submit this to the Economic Development Department and have them submit a letter. The deadlines are provided, and if we could have a workshop, that would be, there's enough time, and we would understand the time constraints. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Other speakers.
Just briefly, I just wanted to clarify some inaccurate information that was provided to you. The, I wanted to remind the council that this council voted to issue rarely-used legislative subpoenas to Union Bank. As a result of that, there were thousands of pages of documents that were produced from Union Bank, and those, we provided every one of those documents to Ms. Bingham. We did redact private information, account numbers, but the documents were provided to Ms. Bingham. So she was given those documents, so just want to be clear on that. Number 1. Number 2, the list of lawsuits, for those that were here at the last meeting, we went over that, you were provided with the list of lawsuits. So the law does not mandate that you contain or include a list of lawsuits that are pending on your agenda. This city actually goes above and beyond what's required by including that list in the packet to keep the community informed about the litigation that the city is a party to. The allegation that lawsuits are being hidden, I'm not sure what the speaker was referring to, but we disclose the lawsuits that the city is a party to. We have no reason not to, so.
Thank you.
And that the city's been served with. So if there's a lawsuit out there that somebody's filed that the city hasn't served with, it may not be on the list. But once the city's served, and we generate that list, we include it.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll close public comments at 6:34. So now I can move on to the consent agenda item. And I have already adjourned the Beaumont Financing Authority. Okay. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions can be read by title only. And do we have any items that would like to be polled? First of all, do we have any comments on any of these items?
Yes, item 7.
Item 7. Okay, so let's poll item 7. Are there any other items to be polled? Need to poll item 6. Okay. Mr. Laura, 5. Ms. Carroll, number 4.
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. So I will move that we approve the ballots, which is item number 2, 3, 4, and 8.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. So now we'll move on to item number 5, which is the unmanned aerial system. And I think, Mr. Laura, you polled that one?
I did. So would you like me to read through the agenda report, or is there?
Actually, no, I just wanted to thank you for the videos to reference, and thank you for the responses, which are the questions I had. Is there any other information that you want to share? I think after, especially after seeing the earthquake damage in Mexico, that that just adds to the use for this drone, as well as the other items that you referenced in your background, so.
You know, coincidentally, if you will, today, at our peak, one of our peak busy times, at about 2:40 PM, when we're dealing with after-school traffic issues and we're really dispersed, we had a call today where a man, you know, when people are desperate and they need help, we know who they call first, right? They call 911, and that's what we're here for. And so today, a man called, referenced his adult daughter, who had a heart transplant, but she has the mentality of a 12-year-old. She walked away. He brought her to a job site, and she walked away. And he didn't have visual for three to four minutes. And like I said, our resources are spread out. Coincidentally, unfortunately, we were able to respond and locate her, but when you have situations like this, you know, it was just timely in the sense of, people call the police department when they need help only, right? Never, rarely do you get people up here talking about it when they don't need us. And so absolutely, you know, this was the perfect time where if she wandered too far into the rural areas or got onto the train tracks, time is of essence. You know, and so just another situation where, and again, like most people, they don't, you know, we don't pay attention to what our children are wearing when they leave the house, especially this, I don't, this guy. So we don't even know what she was wearing. So you're going to get up, you can get up in the air with this thing, sit up there for a long time, and get a big picture, and you're just going to see, you know, the behaviors of walking, wandering around. It would have, in this case, we didn't need it. But in the future, we ought to have a tool like this for our OES and our search and rescue responsibilities will be very comforting, I think, not only to the staff, who pretty much every day she goes, and that staff, and of course, I think the public's going to have much more confidence in it as well.
Well, Chief, I know that you always look for new tools to be placed on your tool belt to have you do your job. I appreciate your forward thinking. Personally, I helped take care of my mom, who is heading that way, and I mean, just there's a use for it, I think, and as our parents tend to get, or getting older, we're required to look out for them and take care of them as they move on past, I mean, just I think this would be a great tool. Also wanted to add that there is an expo in Vegas, so if you need a representative to attend on your behalf, I'll be volunteering that.
Absolutely. Well, I'm sure the sergeant here, Sergeant Robert Galletta, and he's here today to answer with any technical questions you may have. He is our department guru. He's been a novice with him for some time in his civilian capacity with an FAA license. The department will have to seek our own, and he'll be the manager of the program. So if you have technicals, let me know, and I'll bring Sergeant Galletta up to the stand.
Ms. Carroll?
I have a question, Chief. I read through this, and this can only be used during the daylight hours, right? You don't have event monitoring from this during the evening hours when it's dark, or am I mistaken?
In this case, you're mistaken. We can use this in the evening, the lens. Interesting enough, of course, camera lens, you know, costs as much as the unit.
Okay.
But absolutely, we'll build, seek a heat sense off the body in some of our rural, okay, our rural areas. And also, you know, this is in partnership. areas. And also, you know, this is in partnership with our K-9 Mila, you know, she's cross-trained to pick up scents. We have an off-road vehicle. And so we believe by bringing in all these multiple facets that we can respond, I think, to the way that this community expects us to. And again, this is always in concert and partnership with the Sheriff's Department's search dogs of the desert wildfire. We're not replacing them, we're just augmenting and hoping that through local control, we can speed the process up.
Mr. Martinez, do you have any questions?
Just a quick question. And Chief, looks after the startup costs, it just looks like there's not going to be much anticipated for maintenance and replacement. So if there's anything that you foresee would just set up that in your budget, I assume, and cover that?
Anticipate, perhaps some props, some batteries, you know, battery life, depending on how that works. But that, the way that we had instructed the cadet program, you know, it's the bulk of our SLESA funds, our COPS funding that this council approved, we'll have that money that will go to the town hall as well. So we're going to do this through grant funding.
And as far as training the officer who operates that, is this sole one person that's licensed, or can they train others so that more could be available?
Absolutely. We have multiple operators, but we'll keep it small enough where we maintain that consistency, that training. It's a very delicate, I'm not sure if they'll even let me fly in or.
You'll have to try a cheaper drone. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
We might let your 12-year-old fly it.
I'm sure.
They know how.
I have a couple of questions. With all technology, especially in your industry, you know, comes questions of privacy, and I know you addressed that briefly in here. But, so I have a couple of questions. And first of all, I'm assuming that before it's put in place, that there'll be either a manual, an ordinance, something that's guiding when it can be used. Because I could see people concerned that while it's being used for tracking or for whatever purpose that we expect it to be used, if you happen to see quality-of-life violations, or you happen to see other crimes committed, like marijuana being grown in an area where it's not supposed to be, this is information that you wouldn't have if you weren't up with the drone. So, you know, how do we address those issues? And, you know, what is the plan going forward on that?
Absolutely. So, the police department has a policy that we are vetting. So every action, every operation, every unit that we have is governed by our department policy. And so that's really the backbone of, you know, I don't want to say it's the police department's bible, but in many sense, it would be, right? That's what we rest on, our policy. So, there isn't going to be random patrol. So, it's going to have a reason that we put it in the air. And of course, each reason's prioritized with search or OES being priorities, one. You know, two, you know, we have critical infrastructure in this city with the ITAN, the transit, the sewer plant, and different things that we need to look at and do threat assessments on, because we have to respond to those, right? And so you've got probably your priority two. And then your priority three, obviously fatal collisions, violent crime scenes. Normally, we have to wait for the sheriff's department to give us a lift and then take aerials. We can fly this thing up into the air. So, we're not going to be doing random patrol. But, for example, we're on our way to the canyon area, and you're right, we fly over, let's say somebody's got like a little mini pot farm. I would have to answer that. I don't know, we don't even have the camera on at that point, or any help with that.
Yeah, I think I can offer a little bit of guidance. There are a number of case laws on the books from the Supreme Court regulating the use of aircraft in civilian airspace. And some of those incidentals are mentioned. Incidental observation of a marijuana farm, well, that comes within our purview as law enforcement. Those things do happen, and we understand that there's a privacy concern as well. But I'd like to urge everybody in the room to understand that, you know, we're in the business of helping people in their darkest, most vulnerable hours. We see a lot of things that never come to the public light, because we maintain our professionalism. And oftentimes, we get the scenario, well, what if somebody's out bathing in the nude, or sunbathing, or whatever? Well, the quick response to that is clearly, we maintain our professionalism. We carry on with the mission at hand. We don't get distracted by the other superfluous stuff. We do what we're called to do to serve the public.
Okay. Because, you know, I know that you could just pull up a Google map and see some, I'll say, code enforcement violations, you know, a bunch of abandoned cars in the back of somebody's yard. Google Maps are usually two or three years old, so I don't know that you can act on that. But as I'm saying, I'm just, I just don't want us to be in a position where people are using this as a reason that we're persecuting them, or, you know, trying to, you know, so that's where I'm coming from, as far as, you know, I agree with the idea with the marijuana farm, that scenario, and, you know, obviously some other violent crime that you might be witnessing that you weren't up there for, those kinds of things. But I'm just more concerned that the public will look at it as an opportunity for us to try and intimidate people with quality-of-life issues.
Yeah, absolutely. And so again, we're not doing proactive patrol with the unmanned aerial vehicle. We just don't have the time. The sergeant has many other duties. He oversees our investigations bureau. I don't have the personnel to just fly the thing and look at those things. But, and like I've said some time ago, I treat a lot of our quality-of-life issues as, you know, again, if your neighbor's got the boat parked in front of his house, and you're good with it, and other neighbors are complaining, I don't have the staff, and they don't have the time to be too proactive on those minor quality-of-life issues. Those, we're into beautification of the city, life safety issues. And so flying the drone over and seeing the car that the guy swears he's going to rebuild and get it out of his wife's backyard, that's, that isn't interesting.
Okay.
When the neighbors start calling, and they expect us, the community enhancement unit, to act on those things, we will, but not through, not through this vehicle.
Okay. I just remember that one of the first issues, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but one of the first issues we addressed was, the accusation came that it was a view from the top of another building.
Correct.
And so, I just, I'm not asking you tonight to make any promises or commitments. I'm just suggesting that your policy directly deals with those kinds of, you know, what level is something that, you know, we're going to ignore that because it's whatever, you know, what classification, that kind of thing.
Right. So we'll be able to track each time that we use this. If there's a question that, hey, there was, you know, I was at the high school game, and there were many drones up, that's not ours, ours won't be up there.
Right.
So the question may come up, hey, there was a drone flying over my house, it was the police department. Well, I'll be able to track every single time that we deploy it.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Thank you.
And so, and then, what we're asking then is for city council to approve the UAS program to enhance frontline law enforcement in the city of Belmont, which meets our needs under SLESA funding, to approve the purchase of the UAV and its needed accessories. And we're basically telling you the startup cost will be under $15,000 applied to that grant funding.
I move for all three recommendations, as just read.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Have you had a public comment on this?
We didn't have a, we didn't have a public comment on this one.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. So we'll move on to item six, the school resource officer agreement with the Belmont Unified School District.
Mayor, I was going to recuse myself from this, since, even though there's no legal foundation, it's just since I'm an employee of the district. But if we don't have discussion, I can always abstain from voting, I assume, too.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a legal conflict. When, under the Political Reform Act and 1090, when the source of a financial interest is a salary that an individual receives from a government agency, there, it's a non-conflict. But Councilmember Martinez indicated, just since it affects the schools that he works at, that to avoid even the appearance of impropriety, that he was going to recuse himself.
There's no public comments on this one, correct? Does anyone in council want to make comments or have questions? Would an abstention be?
Okay, so I'll recuse myself.
Okay. I don't think we need a staff report. I'll move to approve item number six.
I'll second.
So there are multiple pieces that we're supposed to approve on this?
There's a resolution. I need you to approve.
So it's a resolution, authorize staff to execute the agreement, and authorize the police department to hire one additional police officer above the fiscal year 18 authorized position. So that's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
All right, so you can come back in. And item number seven, we have a public comment on this, right?
Correct.
Let's take the public comment first. At 6:51, I will open public comments for this item.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mr. Pinkney, you are dead wrong on the bank requisitions. You gave me bank requisitions, not bond fund accounts.
Ms. Bingham, can you state to the item that you're speaking on, please?
Listen, I'm tired of waiting for those bank statements. Somebody better figure out what they are if they don't know, and I don't believe he knows what I'm talking about. And I want them, or there'll be another lawsuit on your hands. Do you understand?
Would you please speak to the item that's you're addressing?
First of all, we still don't have the June 2016 general ledger. This is a big red flag. How did you do the audit without that general ledger? I've asked over and over for it, just like I asked for other public requests, but I am ignoring it. How is it possible the Transit Department received three more buses and added more routes, but made even less than last year? Only in Beaumont does two plus two equal one. Where are the auditors to present the audit that you're going to be voting on? Undertaking 21 requires the city to set formal policies and procedures to be followed for the preparation, review, and approval of official statements and continuing disclosures. That is in direct response to Beaumont Staff and Council's "no one is accountable" dance. On September the 11th, 2017, Finance Director Melana Taylor told the Belmont Finance and Audit Committee that SEC regulations did not apply to municipalities. The 2016 financial statements for the Transit Fund were on the committee agenda with no direction. The committee approved the financial statements after Elaine Morgan read a prepared statement that the committee was not responsible for the audit or the hiring of the auditors, as required in Section 10A of the 1934 Securities Act. The auditing firm, Van Land Fink Hannell, did not attend the meeting. The staff report gives no direction. Who is approving this audit?
Thank you, Ms. Bingham. I have just a quick point of information for you. I am not receiving any of your public records requests, because I've learned that you and Libby are still copying my personal email. And I told, I told Mrs. Yurimovik that I was not going to take the vulgar and hateful emails on my personal email when I have a city email, and she refuses to use my city email. So I'm not getting copied on your requests that are going to the rest of the council. So I just wanted to let you know to please begin using the city council email on that.
Well, I use the city council email when I contact.
Okay. So, were there any questions or comments? Yeah, let's have a staff report on this one. Well, I'll close public comments at 6:55.
Did you want a full staff report, or did you just want me to address?
Let's do the full staff report, please.
I'm standing in for Melana, who could not be here tonight. So, I'm just going to highlight a few of the sections of the staff report. The Beaumont Transit System is an enterprise fund. It is outside of the general fund. And so the reporting rules are a little bit different for an enterprise fund than they would be for the rest of the city. The goal of this, this audit, the goal of the BTS, when we receive operational funding, is to complete the year with a zero balance. Normally, you would have a fund balance at the end of the year, but in our case, RCTC does not want us to have a fund balance at the end of the year. If we ask for $3 million in funding, they expect us to use $3 million in funding. And so we end with, our goal is to end with a zero balance. We also receive grant funding for our capital projects. And I believe the speaker had a question about how can we buy three buses and add routes when our revenues went down? It's because the capital pays for the buses, any large items. Most buses cost between $325,000 per bus, up to a half a million dollars. And so we ask for special grant money to buy those buses. That is outside of the operational funding. The operational funding is your local transportation fund, and they're two separate pots of money, and we can't use one for the other. So the grant funds are also asked for, the funding to take possession, well, I already explained that. The funds received in advance are not recognized as revenue until they're spent, and the Beaumont Transit System has recognized deferred capital assistance in the amount of $265,140 as of June 30th, 2016. And basically, what that means is if we don't have, if we have not spent the capital money within the fiscal year, then it becomes deferred, and so it rolls over to the next fiscal year. And so the deferred amounts that you see in the audit are capital money that we have not spent. And I'll give you an example. If I order a bus today, it takes one year to take delivery of that bus. It takes exactly, sometimes 13 months, from the date of the order, until we actually take possession of that vehicle. And so we're crossing over different fiscal years, and so that's why they become deferred. The prior year audit included a deficit in the unrestricted net position as a result of the implementation of Gatsby 68, which is the pension liability. And we have since reconciled that. Two years ago was the first year that we had to do that, and so it showed that we actually had a negative, and that's since been corrected. The liability represents future costs that would be incurred to meet the requirements of the pension agreement for the current employees at retirement. And this is based on an actuarial calculation and does not indicate a shortfall whatsoever. All of the transit operators have to do the same thing. So with that.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Ms. Carroll?
And as I understand it, from the Finance and Audit Committee meeting, where this was reviewed, Melana also brought up that in the future, the audit will be done by Riverside County, correct?
Correct.
And that will be, make it much easier on us in terms of timeline and getting documents ready, et cetera.
They were waiting for this one to be done before they took that on, but we have confirmation from them. They would prefer to do the audits. There's two audits that RCTC performs. One is the financial audit, and then there's another triennial performance audit, which is your internal controls. And every transit operator that receives funding from RCTC has those two audits performed.
I look forward to that, and thank you very much for a good report.
Mr. Laura?
So RCTC reviews the audit results, they're given to RCTC, and they can, there's a concern, they would raise that?
Absolutely. And they actually have already reviewed this, and their CFO, Ms. Trevino, has made her comments on it, and she is expecting a signed copy tomorrow, if it's approved tonight.
Okay. So the question was that it... So the question was that if you add buses and you add routes, you would think that that would increase revenues because you're from over last year. And so how does that work?
Well, in the real world, that's not always the case.
Okay.
You can buy the buses, but you can't make people get on it.
Okay.
And so the revenues, a portion of the revenues do come from passengers. 10% of the revenues come from passengers. We are seeing record lows across the region. Every transit operator has seen a reduction in passenger counts. This particular year, we had a reduction of about 8% from the prior year on passenger trips, but we're not unique in that. All of the transit operators are looking at ways to get people back on public transit. And I was in a meeting with RCTC, and they attribute it to a recent influx of driver's licenses being issued to people that normally would not be eligible for driver's licenses in the past, and that had to do with new legislation. I believe they researched and found that the DMV had issued 1 million more driver's licenses than in prior years. And so when people are able to drive, they don't necessarily use public transit. So the buses, again, are purchased through capital money, which is completely separate from operations.
Okay.
We plan the routes in the operations with the understanding that we're going to plan the routes where people need to go. But those buses can ride around empty. That's not our goal, that's not our intention, but...
Okay, thank you for that explanation. No further questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Carol.
I just want to add a supporting thought to that. The other thing, being involved with T-NOW and listening to transit and listening to the different ridership numbers, you have to, when you get a new route, you have to actually promote it, and you have to encourage it in the community. So instituting, correct? I've seen you do great promotion for new routes, so you need to actually build that up. So the fact that you get a new route, to my understanding, from working with you, isn't that everybody's going to jump on it immediately, you have to build it over a period of time.
Correct, and we do get a two-year exemption on new routes. We are not required to meet the 10% mandate fare box recovery in the first two years, but in the third year, we are. And so, for example, the Route 136 in Calamasa, we're one year into that route, and we're not seeing the numbers that we would like to see. And so we are working closely with the City of Calamasa and the Calamasa Chamber of Commerce and the School District, UCAIPA, Calamasa Joint Unified, to promote that route. And we've seen a slight increase, but we will continue to monitor that because next August is our sunset on our two-year exemption for that route. And if it's not meeting the 10% mandated fare box recovery, then we need to look at either modifying the route 25%. You know, there's a multitude of things that we look at. We change it, we go back out and find out why people aren't riding it. Which brings up another point. One of the things that we are focusing on next year is choice ridership. Choice ridership are people that have two cars in the garage that don't need public transit. And so we have a travel training program that we are weekly looking at new ways of getting people to LA Union Station. Selena was on the bus today. We're looking at a travel training to Ontario Airport. And again, these are choice riders. That's what's going to sustain Beaumont Transit, the choice riders, the people. As our median household income increases, we're going to see less and less passenger, transit-dependent passenger base. And so we need to start shifting our focus to choice riders, and we're going to do that through the travel training program. We're going to show choice riders that there are options besides your car, and you can use public transit to get to certain destinations.
Thank you. Are we ready for a?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
So just for procedure-wise, so the draft that we receive and file, if there are any reasons why those numbers have to modify, does it come back here again just to remember we had some issues with the draft and numbers?
Correct.
And so, is that the procedure? If for some reason they do have to change, you would come back and say we have to?
If there's any potential amendments, there should not be any amendments.
Right, of course.
This is a filed document. So again, one of the things to clarify is, you know, as alluded to tonight, this is an independent audit. It's to be conducted independent of influence by the council and approval by the council. So this is their opinion of the financial statements of this particular enterprise fund. So there really isn't an action or an influence that y'all can or should apply to this effort. Another thing I wanted to clarify very quickly, too, is I think it was a misstatement or a stretch tonight when it was stated that Ms. Taylor, Finance Director, said that the city was not subject to SEC. That's not what she said, it's not what she reported to the Finance Audit Committee. What she stated was that we are governed under sections of the 1933, 1934 SEC Act, and there are some broad exemptions for municipalities that don't necessarily apply to private sector and other elements within the bond market and securities markets. So there are segments of that that we comply with and we are complying with. So we did not say, and staff did not report, that we are not subject to. This is all in full compliance with SEC requirements as well as GASB requirements and guidelines.
Thank you. I move to receive and file the Beaumont Transit System Audit Report for fiscal year 1516. I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. So we'll move, that's the last of the consent agenda. We'll move on to action items, number nine. Direction to staff on a billboard ordinance amendment to allow digital display conversions.
Thank you, council. Staff is looking for direction on amending the Beaumont Municipal Code. I have listed the current code in your staff report. It's long, I'm not going to read it word for word, but it basically prohibits any kind of application to alter, enlarge, or convert an existing billboard. It was determined that we have sufficient billboards in both size and quantity, and so this was done by previous council. Obviously, as technologies are changing, we are seeing, Southern California is seeing an increase in digital displays, and so we wanted to get direction from you whether this council wanted to consider an ordinance amendment to allow for digital displays. So we're asking for direction. Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this one?
None.
Okay, any questions or comments from council?
I'm going to have some questions. Do we have the?
Go ahead.
Is the person, do we have anybody in from the sign community that's present, or?
No.
No?
We haven't discussed it with them. We did have a contract come to council quite a few years ago from Lamar when they purchased a big bulk of our billboards, and part of that contract included discussions of going to digital displays. It was separate from our ordinance, but a contract. And then we have some recent requests. I didn't ask for anyone to be here. We were just trying to see whether council wanted to even entertain the option to allow them before we discuss different ways to go forward.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
How does this, digital billboards, what would the impact be on our dark skies?
My understanding is there's not a big impact the way that the light emits. It's not, it doesn't create sky glow. I can definitely look into it more, but my understanding, from what I've seen personally, it doesn't emit. Actually, some of the old billboards that probably have lights shining on them is probably more of a, if it were to be done now, violation of the dark sky ordinance, but since they were pre-existing, they're okay. So my understanding is it would not increase any kind of sky glow to do digital billboards.
Would that be true no matter how high it was, no matter how low it was?
Because it's facing people down, you're looking at it from the road level, it's not emitting up. So it would be the same as someone who had parking lot lighting that is meant to trap it down and shine onto the ground so that the people could see it, because obviously if the billboard, the diodes and the individuals were facing up, then the people wouldn't see it. So I can definitely do more research if you guys decide to go this way and bring back a section that talked about the dark sky and its effect on it.
Well, I'm very interested, and we've been very protective of our dark skies. And if I want to change the light in front of my house, that's next to my garage door, I have to make sure that I comply with the city's requirements.
That's correct.
And I respect that, but this seems like a pretty huge sign that I would wonder. And I appreciate that you have an understanding, but I guess I just really want to know. And I did have a couple of things brought up to me by members of the community, and one of them was that they apparently read a report that said digital billboards by highways causes distracted driving. And I don't know if you've read about that or if that's true. I did not look up the study myself, but they did say that they had seen studies where it was definitely a risk for distracted driving. And then, of course, I get into the maintenance issue, too, which is, you know, maintenance of a digital billboard, is it any more difficult than what we currently have? And sometimes I think some of our signage isn't maintained as well as it should be. So I guess I would wonder about that. So I'll leave those three questions with you, and you just tell me what you know, please.
So in terms of the distracted driving, that it has been a concern of the council in the past. I think that's one of the primary reasons that it was originally prohibited. As they become more prolific, I have not looked recently into the updated data, updated data, and I can definitely look into that, but I haven't heard anything specific or any lawsuits associated with it that would cause, they're still coming out and they're still being, you know, coming out more and more and more cities, but I can definitely, again, report back on any latest studies or data on distracted driving due to digital billboards.
I can provide you some information on that, too.
And then the last is the maintenance. Although, yes, our maintenance is different in our existing billboards, one of the options in going to a digital display, they do have more opportunity to rent more space because you don't have to go up there to replace it. And so I think the maintenance schedule, they have a higher reason, you know, to maintain it. I don't believe it's any more difficult, you just have to have a different technician, you still have to get up there and do it just like you would any other one. However, if one option to allow for digital conversions could be a conditional use permit, and in that conditional use permit, we could have a standard condition for maintenance, and therefore, if we had any problems, we could revoke the conditional use permit due to non-performance of those conditions. So that is one way to do that. Another opportunity for the city through a conditional use permit is to, a lot of cities require the city to allow free advertising on digital displays because it doesn't really cost them anything to add a city display every so often. It just costs them in a sense of possible loss of other people. And so we've seen other cities, when we originally looked at that, through the conditional use permit process, conditioned it to have, allow for city informational displays as well.
And the, our big Beaumont sign, that is not under conditional use permit now, is it?
That was under original conditional use permit. Yes, it is.
Okay, so it still is?
Yes.
So we could, can we potentially modify that if it goes to digital? Does that give us an opportunity to modify that?
Yes, so under, if you guys direct us to do an ordinance and whether it's under a conditional use permit, they would apply for a new conditional use permit, which would basically override the old one if the new one got approved, and they'd have a new set of conditions of approval.
Okay.
That would be based on their new application, which would include either all digital or a combination of digital and static display.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, so I like the idea of, you know, the digital moving forward to the technology. I just have an issue with balancing that hopefully not Vegas look with, you know, detracting from our mountains and our beautiful scenery here. So, you know, that's something I'd like to see what we find. So I don't know if we're at the ordinance stage yet, I think maybe still fact finding, but do we have an intention to have the planning commission weigh in on this?
Yeah, actually, that would probably be the step that staff would definitely recommend. Per our municipal code, Title 17 amendment should go through the planning commission. So they would be the first one to, if you directed us to start the process and doing an ordinance amendment, we would take that to the planning commission for recommendation to council.
Okay, and my other question had to do with Twilight, so that would answer.
And in terms of Vegas, this ordinance would not have to require additional billboards. It could just allow upgrades of static display to digital. So we can still prevent additional billboards from being installed under the same finding that you found that there's sufficient number of billboards already in the city.
And would your research involve looking into other cities that have them to see what possibly they've been going through or things that they have in their ordinance that they might want to modify, which they could over?
Yes, definitely. Part of our normal ordinance review is to look at what other cities do, and based on your direction for how you'd like us to go about it, we try and look at how other cities have tackled that specific scenario.
Mr. Lara, I'll let you go after council.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. This ordinance was originally back in '03, right?
It has been updated a few times. I believe the last ordinance update was in 2010.
Okay, and I thought I either read it in here somewhere, or when I asked about this earlier in the year, my understanding was that the rule right now says you can't have a new one unless you take an old one down, correct?
That's correct.
But then I start thinking, in 2010, I think there's a lot more billboards now than there were in 2010. So how did, you know, how did that?
From my memory, the most three recent ones are the ones that are in front of AMAL, and I believe they were approved before 2010. They may have been installed after that fact.
Okay.
But the conditional use permit, the last conditional use permits process were the ones that are in front of that AMAL, and those did have a 10-year sunset. That came up, and that's when Lamar bought them, and they brought a contract back to council to keep them in response to removing some other ones. So we're working through that contract to remove some older ones, relocate some onto city property, those are some of the older ones, and install some new ones. And so the full change hasn't happened, but in order to keep those, that part of that was to remove some other ones, and so we're still working through that contract with them.
And then I know a little something about the safety improvement or lack of, as far as drivers, but I know that's what Mr. Pardon wants to talk about, so I'll leave that to him. But I also understand, we could, with reopening the ordinance, even address something that says, you know, if someone like Lamar wants to come in and put up an electronic one, they have to remove two to put up an electronic. I mean, we could change our ordinance to remove the static ones in place of less electronic digital ones.
Absolutely.
Okay, and to address the issue on maintenance safety, my understanding is it's a lot safer to change ads because they can just do it from a computer monitor in the office of the company that owns the sign.
Yes, I guess I misunderstood. I thought it was the actual maintenance of the sign, like if something went out.
Okay.
Is that easier to maintain than a static? And then I thought safety was just driving.
But right now, for any changes?
Any change, they have to go up.
Someone has to go up there, and we're looking at, or?
Yes.
Somebody's looking at liability, whether it's the city or whether it's the owner of the sign. And we also could, are any of the signs that we have now on city property and generating revenue?
No, I do not believe we have billboards, but part of that Lamar agreement included removing some and installing some on city property. So we are looking at a future revenue stream through billboards with that contract.
And Ms. Carol brought up the Hello Beaumont sign. Is that on city property?
I'm sorry, which one?
The Hello Beaumont sign?
It is not. That is on private property and private ownership. It is a standard billboard. It was just conditioned when that conditional use permit came to council to have a Welcome to Beaumont sign added to their billboard.
But some cities do put up digital billboards on city property and get a lease agreement from the owner, correct?
Correct.
So we could?
Any billboard, whether digital or static?
Right.
Could be installed on city property with a lease agreement.
But a city could probably charge more for digital because it's going to provide a lot more revenue to the owner of the sign, I would think.
That would be research I'd have to do on going rates for static versus digital. I'm not aware what the lease differences are and what's being charged currently.
Well, I'm in favor of opening the ordinance, but I'll let, Mr., go ahead.
The only question I had on the review for remove two for every, and I definitely like that idea, would you want to restrict people who only own one billboard like the Welcome to Beaumont and say you need to partner with someone else to remove one to go digital? Or would you?
Well, here's my thought on the Welcome to Beaumont one. Well, here's my thought on the Welcome to Beaumont one, I think it's become an icon. You know, it's like when you drive by Moranga, you expect to see the colors up on the hotel. I think if the owner of that wanted to move that to a digital sign, I think we ought to at least consider whether or not we would allow that to happen. I'd hate to see that sign go away, I think some people probably think it's an eyesore, but I know a lot of people are, well, where's Beaumont? And it's like, well, you see that big sign as you go out to the desert, that's where we are.
And I personally, as staff, think it's more of a headache than an eyesore because everyone calls us for renting it and we don't own it, and we have to direct them to the private sign up there.
But I also like the idea of getting some, you know, we could get some advertisement, city advertisement for upcoming events.
Right, that is the benefit of going digital, is that it's much easier for them to advertise for city events, that like that Welcome to billboard, that did, in the original conditional use permit included a requirement for them to put up city displays, which we have used rarely, but sometimes in the past.
Okay.
But digital, it's much easier for them because then they don't have to output the cost because it is a simple upload of a digital image. It's a much cheaper affair for them to display city news.
And just in case this becomes a question, the Smash Mouth sign was not something we paid for to put up there, correct?
That I cannot answer, I was not involved in the Smash Mouth. The previous summer concert, the small square one, I was involved in, and we did not out pay to do that, that was part of the conditional use permit conditions of approval that they put it up for us.
I do know that it was a donation by the sign owner to put up the Smash Mouth.
Yeah, I was not involved in that one.
Okay. Mr. Pardon, did you want to add to that? And Mr. Martinez, if you want something more, I'll let.
I just had another quick thing, and I assume that anything that we're doing downtown would be considered the beautification project with that on the ordinance, so that, because I don't see us having a nice theme downtown than having a digital sign right there, I don't know how that would go.
I don't think, I don't think we were really just contemplating, looking at the billboard and the outside advertising elements to it, not necessarily delving into the rest of our sign code, but if that's something you want to open up to look at, then certainly could. But that's not really the intention.
Yeah, and if I can mention, the downtown specific plan was part of the contract for our general plan update personnel to look at, and that would probably address some signs downtown, so that would be separate from this review and discussion. When that downtown specific plan came forward, we could look at if signs are addressed in there and if you wanted to.
Okay, I just didn't want to have a contradiction between something the ordinance had.
No, and again, this billboard, I think all that we are looking at right now is not, that would not allow anything to add additional billboards, it would just be a simple, allow for alterations to.
Well, that Lamar that's there by the Amal would be, off the freeway, would be in that area, though, correct? Depending just where we still define as downtown, but.
Yeah, it depends on how we end up defining downtown.
Well, I was just looking for, make sure there was no contradiction.
$60,000 question.
Yeah, that's.
Mr. Pardon, you have?
I was just going to say, on the distracted driving issue, I think what you're going to find if you go back, when you look at those studies, there's two contributing factors that really lead to the highest levels of distraction. One is whether they're stagnant or whether they're moving videos that are on the sign, and the other is how fast those sign faces roll over. And so, and I think what they show is that the, a sign needs to be up a minimum of four seconds for a driver to read and actually absorb the message that's on that sign. So a lot of cities, when they were looking at this, were adopting rollover rates of between six to eight seconds, so that sign needed to stay up at least that long. And really, and a lot of that was developed in conjunction with the sign industry because they're looking at it, and they realized for effective marketing, you have to, again, absorb the message that's on that sign. And then the other issue would be, a lot of cities are prohibiting, especially along major thoroughfares, movement on those videos, so you have to do a stagnant display.
And if I can touch on that, we already have an ordinance for electronic displays within our sign code, so people like a Walgreens who would want to put lettering, it requires a conditional use print, and already has those standards, no moving animation, and I believe it's every six seconds, but don't quote me on that, I'd have to double check the code. But we do have those standards already built into our current digital display standard for non-bilboard, for onsite messaging.
Yeah, that's probably a pretty industry standard at this point.
So do we have direction for staff on whether.
Can I add one detail to that?
Go ahead.
The four second, I have heard the four second, and that's also, in a static billboard, you have to be able to read it in four seconds for it to be effective from a marketing perspective. So thank you very much for that. The maintenance, I use maintenance as a general term because often with the Smash Mouth and with some other things, that Beaumont sign has sometimes had announcements that are extraordinarily outdated, sometimes by a year or more, and I don't think that's a very good image for the town. I think that at a point when it stays up that long and it's that outdated, it becomes almost mocking that it's still up there. So the maintenance issue, and I realize digital, I know enough about technologies to know that digital is easier to refresh, and I'm concerned about that from a maintenance perspective. So I think that being able to refresh it with the current message is good. However, I have now heard the first person tonight who has said that they think that the Welcome to Beaumont sign is nice.
Mr. Laura.
Just, if you could, if we're going to, if council's supportive of moving forward on this, I am not, but if you're going to, the light transmission from there, from signs, I'd like you to provide us some documentation on that. My office, I look out at a sign that I can see, from Riverside, I can see it in Corona on a foggy day. So they do, they are, in my opinion, distracting, I think we have enough distractions for drivers at this point, and texting and cell phones, so I would hate to add to those distractions, so I just wanted to.
Okay, so so far here.
Well, let me ask you a question, that may get him to.
Okay.
Come along. We could open this sign ordinance and decide as a council, we don't want the LED or electronic lights, but we do want to try and lessen the number that we have now, or update our rules and regulations regarding the existing ones, correct?
Correct, we can update it in however the council sees fit. I see two options here, one, you can direct me to go ahead and start looking at digital display allowances and what other cities do, and take it to the planning commission. The other option is for me to return to you with some of these reports that I'm able to find, maybe not the next meeting, but the following meeting, and look up some distracted diving and some lighting, and find out what, how other cities have handled it in reports, and then see if you want to direct us to make a change. So whichever direction council would like to direct me, I can either bring it right back to you with some reports for future direction, or start preparing an ordinance for planning commission to review and bring up these issues for them to look at as well.
And I like the planning commission, and I want to be comfortable that if they decide it's a no-go, we don't even need to visit again, correct?
That's up to you.
I mean, I want to micromanage what they're doing.
If they don't recommend approval, I can bring it back to you, saying they did not recommend approval, and have you take action, or if you want to direct, if planning commission does not recommend, I will not bring it back to you, other than under a city manager update.
And I'm good with that last option, but what do you guys think?
Well, I'd like to have the option to bring it back at least for discussion, then, you know, if there's.
Maybe start with the planning commission.
Yes, definitely.
Let them do their work. Okay.
Sir?
So are you, are you still against it?
If, if the commission go ahead and start the work, I do like the idea of bringing back the informational, having the informational meeting, and at that point, determining if we want to move forward or not.
Right. So do you have our direction?
We're looking.
I heard of planning commission, and to come back here first, which one do we want to do?
I think, I think what we agreed was go to planning commission with the option to bring it back here if afterwards.
If they recommend approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, or if, or if they don't, we just want to hear their input, and then with your.
Information at this point, we can then put a future gen item later if we need.
Okay, so just discuss it with them, not prepare an ordinance.
Correct, that's what I.
Sounds good.
Can we do this, I'm sorry?
We can do anything we want.
Discuss it with planning commission, and also bring back the answers to questions or the informational ones, so that we can have planning commission's input along with the information.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, that's what I meant.
Okay, I will not prepare an ordinance, I will pull the information, go to planning commission, and bring it back to you.
Okay, great.
We are looking for a council volunteer to go with our task force to Vegas to do some.
To research the signs, right?
We just had a drone.
Yeah, exactly.
Look at that night sky for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll move on to item number 10. We have 10, 11, 12. I think we should take a quick break. We'll go with a quick 10-minute break.
Okay.
We'll be back at 7:40. Call the meeting back to order at 7:45. And we'll move on to item number 10, which is a request for proposals, parking administrative citation processing services.
I think the chief is, or somebody from his department.
Oh, officer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, the police department has oversight of community enhancement and animal control, in addition to patrol operations. One of their duties is to enforce state law and local ordinances. Oftentimes, enforcement is through the issuance of administrative citations for violations of the municipal code, such as nuisance abatement, failing to license a dog, false alarm activations, et cetera. Although issuing an administrative citation is punitive, it is also an important tool used to guard compliance from a violator while satisfying the intended goal, which is to enforce the law, or from the community enhancement perspective, beautify our community. Excuse me. Quite frequently, staff conducts ongoing comprehensive reviews of police department operations, and then makes recommendations for updates to operate more efficiently and effectively. In reviewing the procedures and policies of administering and tracking administrative citations, it was determined that the city has not been collecting fines in a timely and efficient manner. Can you hear me? Further analysis indicated that many citations are converted to property lanes that often sit unpaid for lengthy periods of time until an owner sells their interest in the property or attempts to refinance, thus resulting in the need to track uncollected fines for many months or even years beyond the issue date of a citation. Despite efforts of officers in issuing administrative citations for various offenses, there has not been an effective provision in place to track or collect fines generated from issuing administrative citations. As a result of our inability to collect fines on citations that are issued by our personnel, the department utilizes a great deal of staff time that cannot be recuperated, and there lacks a recourse for violators to comply with enforcement directives. There are hundreds of citations from either community enhancement or ACO that have not been paid in addition to administrative citations issued by patrol officers for violations of the noise and false alarm ordinances. Nicole, could you put up the exhibit A, please? If I can direct your attention to exhibit A on the screen. If you notice, the uncollected code enforcement fines, starting from the year 2015, there are $53,574.72 of outstanding uncollected fines. For 2016, you can see that that number has diminished, but is still quite extensive. And then for 2017, we began scaling down our efforts because we recognized that our attempts to collect fines was becoming futile. If you see right below, the uncollected animal control fines for 2015 were $28,300. For the years 16 and 17, we actually, we stopped collecting fines because it made no So currently, the city of Beaumont contracts with a third-party vendor to manage and collect fines related to parking citations, and have found this to be very efficient and easily managed system of tracking and collecting citations. Contracting with a third-party vendor will alleviate staff of some of the commerce of administrative and clerical aspects of citation processing, while increasing fine collection that will positively impact resident compliance. Due to the need to expand the services of a third-party vendor to include administrative citations, the Beaumont Police Department is seeking to publish a request for proposal, or RFP, seeking parking and administrative citation processing and collection services.
Were there any questions, comments?
Just have one.
Go ahead.
As I understand it, the cost for, the additional cost to have a company do the citations will be covered under the citation, so in other words, the city won't be losing money, will still cover staff time, officer time, plus the company's citation time, correct?
That's correct. Any potential fiscal impact will be offset by the collections of paid administrative citations. Thank you.
I just have one comment, Mr. Pardon. I like the breakout of the staff cost that Mr. Laura had asked for earlier, I noticed that through all these new staff reports, I just want to tell you that I appreciate that. If there's no other questions, then I'll go ahead and move to approve and authorize a request for proposal for parking administrative citation processing services.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
So item 11, first reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace section 13.24 concerning stormwater, urban runoff management, and discharge control of the city Beaumont Municipal Code. Before we start, Nicole, do we have anyone to speak on this one? Okay. In your staff report, can you explain, I know I've seen this before, just help me refresh my memory, the waiving of the first reading and approve the ordinance, just explain what you're asking for there, after your staff report.
The city of Beaumont is co-permitted under county's NPDs permit, and as a co-permitted, it has to establish legal authority to control discharge into the municipal facilities such as roads and storm drains that it owns and operates. At minimum, the city should have legal authority to prohibit illegal discharge such as sewage, wash water from cleaning municipal industrial and commercial areas, discharge resulting from cleaning, repairs, maintenance, and any other type of equipment and machinery, wash water from automobile detailing and washing, water from cleaning of municipal industrial and commercial sites, runoff from material storage areas, covered and uncovered, discharge of runoff from washing of hazardous materials, discharge of pool or fountains containing chlorine or other chemicals, pet wash, yard waste, and other sediments, et cetera, and restaurant or food processing waste. In reviewing city's current ordinance with the city attorney's office, it was determined that the ordinance needs to be updated. To better comply with the current NPDs permit, staff has revised the ordinance, and it is attached, and we have also attached the original ordinance, that's in 13.24. The new ordinance better identify staff responsible to enforce the ordinance, allows the city council to adopt fees and fines by resolution if necessary, and it more clearly defines administrative policies and civil actions. And then, we do have to, we have to submit some information, some paperwork to the board, and as, because of that, we are updating the ordinance, and to be able, for the staff to be able to sign, we needed to update this ordinance, therefore, we're requesting to waive the second reading, and this ordinance becomes effective. I don't have the tape.
Okay, so it should actually be waiving the second reading, correct?
No, this is the first reading.
Okay.
And so normally, when you adopt an ordinance, you actually would read the whole thing. And unless you waive the reading, which is typically what cities do, but if the council so desires, it can request that the clerk read the entire ordinance. So that's what waive the reading is, and then the first reading you adopt, you approve the ordinance, and it has to come back for a second reading and becomes effective 30 days after the second.
Okay, so we're being asked really to approve. Okay, so we're being asked really to approve, to waive the reading and then bring it back for a second reading, still?
Yeah, you're approving it, so there'll be two readings. This is the first reading, and this is what we do with all the ordinances. There's the first reading, and you would approve it, and then after more than five, at the next council meeting presumably, it'll come back for a second reading if you approve it tonight, and then after the second reading, 30 days later, it becomes effective. So that's just the way we always do the ordinance.
Didn't this item come before us, or something related to it recently regarding this whole San Ana regional water quality regarding Elsinore, or is this a separate issue?
Yeah, that was, that was where we are part of another permit for discharge into a different area, and then we pay a fee, and there was an item. We do also have an agreement that needs to be updated, and I'll be coming shortly, I believe, next meeting, we may have an agreement that affects that.
That issue, but this is a separate issue.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? I'll take a motion.
I'll take a motion to waive the first reading and approve the ordinance to amend section 13.24 concerning stormwater, urban runoff management, and discharge control of the City of Beaumont Municipal Code.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to item 12, approval of professional services agreements with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated for design services for the Pennsylvania Avenue Interchange improvements, $667,037, and the Pennsylvania Widening Project of $279,889,000.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, this is, the RFP for these projects went out in March of this year. We received five proposals on April 27th of this year, and the project consists of, there's two parts to this project. The project is improvements on Pennsylvania Avenue and I-10. The first phase of it is including upgrading the off-ramps and on-ramps. We have two on-ramps and off-ramps there. We are adding two more. We're adding an eastbound off-ramp and a westbound on-ramp to the interchange. The funding for that is coming from city's TIF. There's $3 million set aside for that project. We are also adding widening of Pennsylvania Avenue from Sixth Street all the way down to Second Street as a separate project, and the reason for that is that that project is under a TUMF. And the funding for that would come from, the TUMF fees will be paid by the development. The, we did receive five proposals for this project. Four of them moved on to interviews. The ones, the companies that were interviewed were Michael Baker International, Kimley Horn and Associates, South Star Engineering and Consulting, and TRC Solutions. And after the interviews and the proposal review, Kimley Horn was rated highest. Staff negotiated fees with them. Originally, when we sent the proposal out, we had included the environmental and right-ofway acquisition as part of the project. Because there's a lot of changes that may occur, especially not knowing which alignment we'll pick for the off-ramps and on-ramps, staff preferred to take those two items out. We'll do the, we have a second item later on. They'll go out RFP for right-ofway and environmental, and this will allow us to better price those two items. We think that not knowing what the scope of the environmental and right-ofway would be was difficult to negotiate a price for those two items. For that, we only included the design of the ramps and the design of the roadway itself. So the roadway would be, would go from two lanes now, one in each direction to four lanes. We'll have two lanes in each direction on Pennsylvania Avenue from Sixth to Second Street. And we would, and the other design would be to put the off-ramps and on-ramps. The current on-ramp is, the, there are two options that we can have. One is an off-ramp, an on-ramp. The existing westbound off-ramp would be moved a little bit north, and we'll have a hook ramp getting onto the I-10. The other option is to put an off-ramp and on-ramp. They'll take the motorist off on Sixth Street, and they'll be away from that intersection. So we have a couple of options that are, that we can study, and based on that, we'll do the right-ofway acquisition, based on that, we'll do the environmental document, and we'll bring the project forward to council for, when we move forward into the next phase, which is to start the construction phase of the project. With that, staff is suggesting that you award the contract for the design of Pennsylvania Avenue Interchange in the amount of $667,037, and for Pennsylvania Avenue Widening in the amount of $279,889 to Kimley Horn and Associates. That concludes my report.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I got some questions.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Pardon.
Something in mind here. Okay, so just, so we have the Pennsylvania grade separation, we have the interchange, and we have the widening. And then this one here is for the interchange, which is the on and off ramp, or not interchange, just on and off ramp, plus widening?
The interchange project is adding on and off ramps to the interchange, and then the widening is also included in this project.
So that's number 12. And then I was just looking ahead, 13's right-ofway environmental, it's coming up. But for the grade separation, where's that at?
The grade separation, we went out with an RFP on that project. We have received proposals. We're reviewing the proposal, and they'll come later on as a separate project.
Okay, I just want to keep them in order, so the numbers are going to start flying at us, so I'm trying to keep everything in order here. And, and the reason you said for having the separation of the additional consultants, why?
The reason is that to negotiate a good price, we have to know the scope of work. It's very difficult for us to define the scope of environmental work at this point, not knowing the alignment of the ramps we would pick. Depending on the alignment, the scope of environmental work will be different. So would be the right-ofway acquisition, because there's different properties involved. The property is just north of the freeway, just west of Pennsylvania, there's a billboard there, it's a different type of property, and if we go to another property that's east, on the east, further east of the intersection, it may be a lot lower to the right-ofway acquisition. So we really weren't sure where we would end up, so we think it would be better and cost-effective if we waited until we have some preliminary drawings, and then went out and got some right-ofway prices. Same thing with environmental.
And that was my last question, with the cost effectiveness, so it looks like it would be more cost-effective to do it this way?
We believe so, yes.
Okay, all right, that's all.
Mr. Lawrence, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Carroll? What's the timeframe on when we'd see the designs?
The design for the widening project would take about five to six months. The interchange project would take another three to six months beyond that because of Caltrans approval that we need. So we're looking at six months for the first phase and another six months, a year for the off-ramp and on-ramp design.
So would this project be possible without us partnering with WRCOG and Caltrans on this?
No, this would not have been possible. Caltrans, it took a lot of effort from Caltrans staff to get their headquarters to approve this project. WRCOG is a partner in this project because they will be funding the widening phase of it. The widening from Beaumont, from Sixth Street all the way to Second Street on Pennsylvania Avenue is part of TUMF projects.
Okay.
So it'll be funded through the TUMF fees that city collects, and they'll be brought back to our area to be spent on that.
So we wouldn't even be voting on this tonight if we didn't renew our regional partnership with WRCOG?
That is correct, and also banning has been key because of the issues involved on Highland Springs Avenue with the traffic. This is one of the things that they recommended as part of WRCOG settlement, was to go ahead and proceed, take some of the money that was being set aside to put towards this project. So because of them, we were able to put $3 million toward this project.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Someone like to make a motion?
Before you all do, there is one slight adjustment that the attorneys had worked with the consultant.
Yeah, just briefly, from the version that you have in the packet, there was, there were some comments from the firm that's being considered, and they wanted changes made to section eight, the indemnification provision. We reviewed those proposed changes, and we're comfortable with the changes that are being proposed, and we've so indicated to them, and I believe that representatives of both the companies here, and they've, I think, signed the agreement, so I think they're okay with the changes as well after we reviewed it and made our comments. So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Does our motion need to reference the changes?
Yeah, I think it would be good with the changes that the city attorney's office and the consultant approved.
Okay.
And Mr. Jakar has a copy, if any member of the public is interested in seeing a copy of the changes, he has a copy of the changes at the podium with him.
Okay.
And I have a copy as well.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the attached agreement with changes as identified by John Pinkney with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated for the Pennsylvania Avenue Interchange Improvements with an amount not to exceed $667,037. And two, to approve the attached agreement, again with changes made, with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated for the Pennsylvania Avenue Widening Project with an amount not to exceed $279,889.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
So we'll move on to number 13, issuance of request for qualification RFQ, request for proposals, RFP, for both environmental and right-ofway services for the Pennsylvania Avenue Improvement Projects and other future transportation-related projects.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, as I mentioned in the, on the item 12, that we are proceeding with the environmental documents and right-ofway documents separate, and so we're requesting issuance of the RFP for those two consulting services. We are also, we are also planning to do a similar thing on the interchange. There is grade separation projects, so we do have California Avenue Grade Separation Project and Pennsylvania Avenue Grade Separation Project for our, for RFP. What we would like to do is go through this process, and whoever we select as the environmental consultant and the right-ofway consultant will be able to help us with those projects as well. And the reason for that is that some of the work that's being done for the right-ofway acquisition and environmental would be helpful in, for example, the grade separation project of Pennsylvania Avenue. So rather than having to go through the RFP process again at a later date, we'll make sure that that's included. Those two projects are also mentioned. What will not be included would be, would be, at this point, would be the cost proposals. So once, once those projects are further along, then we'll request cost proposal from whoever that firm is, and we'll negotiate with them prior to awarding, and the award will eventually come back to the city council. So all we're doing is selecting the firm that will work on all of these transportation projects. We will only award for the first two projects, which is the interchange ramps and the widening of Pennsylvania Avenue. Once the other projects are ready to be awarded, we'll bring another item back to the council, and we'll negotiate the price, and you'll be able to award that contract at a later date. And that's what we're requesting in these two RFPs.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Sure, go ahead.
So, we split the two because we wanted to make sure that we had a design before we put the RFP out for the environmental, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and though, so what you want to do, though, is you want to maintain this environmental company, whoever that is, that we select, to provide cost analysis, to do the environmental studies on future projects once the design is completed?
Once the design, but we don't, we do not wait until the design is complete to do the environmental. We do preliminary design, and then we do the, do the environmental documents, and then after that, the final design is completed. So at some point during that process, we'll be able to bring back an item to council, where you'll be able to award the contract for grade separation projects to the firm that we select now.
Any other questions, comments? All right.
Mayor, I'm still, just one question.
Sure.
So this is for the consultants, so it's not for the design itself. So we're doing, we're awarding for the consultants, but then you said that you can award later for the, for this company. So just one more time, I'm just not getting it.
So in, in design of a project, a transportation project, there are several consultants that are involved. Consultant, the first one that we awarded the design project to, they will be doing the layout, engineering drawings, the lane, the bridge design, and all the other stuff. Then we do have other firms that work on environmental documents, and that's a separate company that normally either works under the design engineer or directly with the city. And then there's also consultant that helps us with right-ofway acquisition. They take the right-ofway documents and make sure that they are proper before we get them recorded, and they help us negotiate the right-ofway costs. So what we've done is we've taken those three things and separate them out in these projects. We are, what we're doing is selecting consultant today for the first phase of Pennsylvania Avenue and the widening project. We're also going out an RFP for the environmental and the right-ofway consultant. The same environmental and right-ofway consultant will be able to help us in the later phases of the project on the grade separation of Pennsylvania Avenue and also on California Avenue as well. But we do, we will have a separate design engineer for those two projects.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you.
It's basically prequalifying.
Right.
Criminal services.
I just wanted to make sure I knew what they were prequalifying for, but yeah, very.
Okay. On item 13, I'll move to approve the attached RFQ, RFP for both right-ofway and environmental services for the Pennsylvania Avenue Improvement Projects and authorize staff to solicit proposals.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Item 14, as I said before, as a homeowner, HOA member of Sun Lakes, because I own a home there, I am going to recuse myself and step out on this one.
Mayor Pro Tim, Councilmembers.
Do we have any public comments on this?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
This, this is an agreement between City of Beaumont, Loma Linda University, and Sun Lakes Country Club Home Association, and this is for Highland Springs Avenue Storm Drive Improvement Project. Highland Springs, along Highland Springs Avenue, just west of the roadway, there is a channel, it's an earthen channel that runs north and south, and it basically goes from First Street all the way down about, about few hundred feet south, and it turns east and goes into the golf course itself, Sun Lakes Country Club. Over the years, there has been erosion to the channel. Some of the channel, the channel, the portion that's earthen is in Loma Linda property, where it crosses the road on Second Street and where it crosses the road at Highland Springs Avenue is in City of Beaumont. There has been damage to the channel itself. Some of the debris has, has been deposited into the Sun Lakes Golf Course. We've been working with Sun Lakes Golf Course and Loma Linda to resolve the issue. One of the things that we agreed was that the city, Loma Linda will take the lead of this, on this project. They will get the design done, they will get the contract, contract ready to be awarded. We'll help them with the current contract administration, we'll help them with all of the projects, other administration of the project will also help them with not charging for permits for this project. And, and then once the project is done, all three agencies will no longer, will no longer claim any liability against anybody else based on the damage that has occurred. So there is damage to the channel, there is damage to the golf course, and there's some damage to the city-owned facilities. So we, and we are repairing our own portion, Loma Linda is repairing their own portion, they are the lead agency on that, and, and Sun Lakes is cleaning some of the, some of the golf course that was damaged because of all this. And we've been working with Loma Linda, the design has been completed, and the construction bids are in, so we're just finalizing the agreement, and once that's done, we'll be able to finish the construction. And we're trying to rush this so we can get this in prior to the rainy season. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions from council?
Just real quick, so the rainy season, you've got a very, very small window to work in if you're going to beat the rainy season.
That is correct.
And they already, as I understand it, it's already been, Loma Linda already has the design, and it's basically, is it shovel-ready, or they have a firm to do the design? I mean...
The design has been completed, and then we also have construction bids.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
I'm good, thank you.
I just have a point of clarification for me. The, I, I know how expensive this was... The, I, I know how expensive this was before when we had problems with it. It's, Loma Linda University is the lead agency, but we refer to entering to the agreement with the City of Loma Linda, so could?
That's just an error.
That's an error.
Okay, thank you. I just thought there was something I missed, but I didn't. All right, thank you very much. If there's no more comments or questions from council?
In, in the cooperative agreement, we did check that, that it does specify Loma Linda University in the cooperative agreement, so we just had a.
It was just the staff report that confused me, sorry. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something else missing on that. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement between the City of Beaumont, Loma Linda University, and Sun Lake Country Club Homeowners Association for the Highland Springs Avenue Storm Drain Improvements Project.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Okay. Item 15, appointment of a Citizens Blue Ribbon Advisory Committee?
On September 5th, we actually adopted a pretty comprehensive capital plan. It's a five-year plan, and it looks at improvement schedules that really take us through fiscal year 2022, 2021, 2022. It was really, as we presented that night, the first step in a comprehensive, more comprehensive capital plan for the city. It really looked at really technically-based needs that we had, and it was really geared towards trying to satisfy the requirements to qualify the city for Measure A sales tax revenue, which we will begin to receive now that we are part of the TUP program and members of WR cog. In addition to that, with Senate Bill 1, the city will be able to start to receive a per unit portion of the additional sales tax that was applied at this last legislative session. And so there were capital plans we need to submit in order to be able to qualify for those. So the next step in that process really is to try to do some community outreach and to try to develop some citizen input and some citizen prioritization towards a more expanded CIP. Again, this plan needs to look at least five years out. We have proposed in here the creation of a 20-member community, ad hoc committee, and this really would be a short-term commitment, so we're looking to really try to have by the end of this year some recommendations and priorities for city council and report to be able to consider. Now, that timing is critical because we are looking at the potential of trying to adjust our future facilities dollars moving into the next tax year. And in order to determine whether we want to, council wants to make some additional decisions on reducing those Pago dollars, the facility dollars further, we need to really notify our bond counsel and our tax consultants, really January, February, at the very latest, so that they can begin to recalculate that and roll that into their assessment work. So 20-member committee is a large committee. However, we have a, like I said, a relatively short timeframe to try to get this done, and we're heading into a bit of a holiday season, so we would like to be able to have, you know, at least, you know, 13 to 15 members at each one of our meetings so we can work through. Won't be a large volume of meetings we have to have. So with that, we're looking at, or recommending that we really try to select or develop some applicants for city council to consider coming up in October. And we had really tried to break the city down into some geographic areas to try to select some representation from, to ensure that not one part of the city is overrepresented and other parts underrepresented. But also it's important to incorporate some additional input into that organization, into that process, so we had looked at some additional at-large positions for you to consider selecting from. Downtown Business Representative, Beaumont Area Chamber of Commerce, the Planning Commission, Economic Development Committee, and the Finance and Audit Committee. Ideally, we'd each have a member to represent them on that area. So attached to the report is a map that really identified the central city as a target area to select a representation from, and then basically quadrants of the city, you know, as you geographically break the city out. So you've got the far west, south of 10, you've got the far west, north of 10, and east of downtown or west of downtown. Then you had, if you really contemplate that, that quadrant to the northeast portion, north of 10, and then to the southeast portion, south of 10. Really kind of geographically breaks that up. So if you do the math, if you were to say, well, if we set one from each quadrant and we have the others coming in, that's like only 11 members potentially. So potentially you would select multiple representatives from the different geographic areas that are there. Again, these are just kind of targeted, to try to help ensure that you're dispersing our people. And then, you know, hopefully if we're successful in getting interest in the community for participation in this committee, that you'll be able to consider applicants as they come in to make sure that you're getting a good cross-section, you know, our demographic within our community. If council would like to proceed with the committee or a structure like this, city staff will be prepared to begin to initiate the recruitment process. I've already reached out to some downtown business owners, I've reached out to a chamber representative already, and so there, there are already a few people who are interested in working with you on this project. But again, they'll evaluate, they'll provide not only a list of projects with some prioritization to it, we'll also be trying to get from the committee some recommendations on how to fund these projects. You know, if, we'll look at all revenue sources and, you know, and a big chunk of those may be Pago. And the committee may come forward and say, you know, hey, we want all these dollars cut back, and we want to see taxpayer relief provided. Then what are the options to replace those funds? And so, you know, those are, those are the conversations and part of the recommendations that we'd be planning to work with the committee to try to bring back to city council. Again, this is the first step in this process. This is something that the city needs to evaluate on an annualized basis at the budgetary process and the budgetary level. And then every four to five years, you need to bring this back to the community in some form or fashion for city, citizen review in the process. This is, I think, a neat program because this really is helping to increase our transparency. More anything else, it's helping to bring our citizens in and create, you know, policy out of citizen input, and so looking at citizens as participants in our process versus customers of our process. So with that, Mayor Council, turn it back to you for question and discussion.
I would, I'd like to see, I'd like your approach as far as recruiting from certain stakeholders. Personally, I would like to see you bring back a full committee of 20, rather than putting us in a position to choose the 15 or the 20. I've already had a couple of people reach out to me, assuming that this would be council appointments, and if the rest of council agrees with my concept of you just bringing an entire committee to be approved, would we then be able to just direct those people to, to city, to you or to the, to the city to let you know they're interested? And then you determine whether or not they fall in the categories that you're looking for?
Yes, and we'll reach out to HOAs, we'll reach out, you know, we'll do our typical solicitation for applications, we'll be, you know, posting, we'll be hitting our social media sites. I had a, I attended a town hall meeting with the Sunnest community last week, I guess last Tuesday, and I did plug it there too. I said, if this is created, we sure could use a couple folks, you know, from this part of town to participate in this process.
I like, I like your approach. Any other questions or comments?
I don't see any need to bog it down with us. I think you've done a good job of balancing it in the community, how you segmented it out, and I'd like to just free you up to go ahead, because I think you're, you're taking a really good approach to make sure it goes across the community, so go for it.
Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, two questions. So if a member's on one of these, like an economic development committee, but is there maybe at large, it's also a member of the community, they can still opt to be on the committee without being the title.
Yes.
And will general plan committee members be able to sit on this committee too?
Yes.
Mr. Lara?
I'm good.
Okay.
I like it.
You just wanted consent, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Item 16, city attorney invoices for the month of August 2017.
Because this matter involves my law firm, I'm going to recuse myself.
I'd help, but the operating system's too old. I forgot how to use this.
Jesus.
Okay, so, are there any questions or comments for item 16? I have a motion.
I'll, I'll recommend approving the invoices in the amount of $49,698.32 for city attorney.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Okay, so we'll move on to council reports, and we'll start with, let's start with Mr. Martinez.
As I cough. All right, so I attended the RCA meeting September 11th. This City of Beaumont remitted the MSACP local development mitigation fees for 64 residential permits in the month of April, 104 in the month of May, and 325 in the month of June. Beaumont still remains the top city contributor out of the 18 cities in the Western Riverside County RCA. Our feature species of the month is the golden eagle. We had a nice presentation on that and learned a lot about the species and how the USGS is monitoring those with GPS tracking and how the RCA has been involved with that. Attended the League of Cities Conference, very beneficial event, an opportunity to attend many of the informative workshops and listen to some great speakers and learned a lot, and it was a wealth of knowledge there to be, to be learned from. Thank you.
I'll jump in next. I too attended the conference and I agree with everything you'd said. I also appreciated the network opportunities, the ability to talk to other elected officials from other cities and get some ideas. And I think that's all that I have to report. Mr. Lara?
Nothing to report.
And Ms. Carroll?
I attended the RTA budget meeting, the T Now meeting for the Transportation Now Group. The Transportation Now Group is going to coordinate a meeting with some people at the school to see, the Beaumont High School, to reach out and see if we can actually do a cooperative project on the centerpiece, if that moves ahead. It's a once-a-year annual dinner that is a big deal within the transportation group. So if that goes ahead, I will just keep you updated on how that progresses. I'm working with councilmember Martinez on integrating that, if we can, into the effort of the school. The, I will do the, attend the Bets meeting on Thursday of this week. I attended the conference. It was very good to get the input from some of the other city council members that I met and networked with on a number of issues that are common. It also was good to meet with a few of the vendors in the expo area for potential doing things, and some of the conference sessions were particularly helpful, so I think it was good for networking. I do want to mention that the, one of the things that the council voted on, and one of the things that has concerned the city, is the San Gregonio Crossing slash Gateway Project that was proposed for Cherry Valley, which the draft EIR had come out. The supervisor, first supervisor meeting on it, it could be the one and only supervisor meeting on it, but that's probably unlikely, is scheduled for October 3rd at 9:00 AM. I've already received a great deal of information from a number of members of the community that just wanted to make sure that I was aware that that meeting was being held. There is a sign that went up on Cherry Valley Boulevard that is the public notice of the meeting, so if you see it, that's what everybody's talking about, and that's all I have to say about that, but there'll probably be a lot more activity within the community on that.
Okay. We'll move on to city treasurer's report.
Good evening. I do have a report from the Finance and Audit Committee. We met on September 11. The committee, Melana Taylor, the finance director, gave us a presentation about the committee compliance with SEC regulations. I don't want to misquote anything in the regulations, so I'm not going to read through this tonight, but, and I think Todd Parton covered it a little bit earlier in the meeting. So other than that, we, Melana gave an overview of the Finance Department Policies and Procedures Manual General Statement. And she said the first step in developing the document is to draft the first section general statement that serves as the overall concept and basis of the policies and procedures. The committee read through the draft general statement presented by Melana, and some changes slash additions were suggested. Melana explained that this is a broad overview and that it's the Finance Department's goal to have the complete Policies and Procedures Manual completed by the end of December. There was a question as to the process that is followed to choose an auditing firm, and Melana explained that it is the same process as for any other consultant hired by the city. They have to follow the RFP process ordinance. She, Melana presented the fiscal year 2016 Beaumont Transit Authority audit and draft Beaumont Transit Financial Statements. And the committee reviewed the audit and recommended it for approval by the city council. The committee asked to see monthly RCTC's financial statements also, if possible. And then, as Elizabeth said tonight, she told us that the RCTC will be doing the audit for us in the future. Melana reported, presented financial reports for July of 2017. The reports were reviewed and questions answered by Melana. Some of the committee members requested more time to review the reports in depth and bring them back to our next meeting in order to decide what we would like to see on a monthly and quarterly basis. The draft reports will be given to city council at the next meeting, which was tonight, with the disclaimer that the Finance and Audit Committee is still reviewing them for approval. Future agenda items include reviewed July financial reports for approval, Finance Department Policies and Procedures update, and fiscal year 15, 16 citywide draft audit report.
Thank you, I have a quick question for you. You had mentioned that you, you sent us a request for the RCTC financials?
One of the committees requested that we, we could see. One of the committee requested that we could see the financials on a monthly basis.
Of RCTC?
For RCTC, so.
Riverside County Transportation Commission?
Well, I guess I should say the Transit Department.
Okay, so that's Beaumont Transit Department.
The Transit Department.
Okay, okay. That's my question, okay.
That was a mistake on my part.
Are there any other questions for our treasurer?
No, I did want to, as a part of the State and Finance Audit Committee, Melana did have a really nice procedure manual that she had started. That will be coming back to council, but just wanted to let council know that what she's doing and the direction that she's going, I think we'll be very happy with policies and procedures that will be outlined in detail for staff.
Great. Before we go on to the next report, Ms. Carroll, you said you wanted to mention one more thing?
I apologize, I forgot one thing. I was asked to say this. The Women's Club last Saturday night had a spaghetti dinner that my husband and I attended, and one of, the Women's Club does many good things for the community, scholarships, many things, but their current spaghetti dinner was to raise funds for, to help the police department. The police department has to interface in many stressful situations where children are involved. And so, the Women's Club decided they wanted to do a fundraiser to raise money to buy teddy bears, so that the police department could have teddy bears available when children are in stressful situations. They raised $1,200, so it was very successful. They have already purchased 100 teddy bears, and they were delivered to the president of the Women's Club in her driveway. She now can't drive in her garage. And if anybody would like to see, it's a public document, I have a picture of the teddy bears. So, I will share it. And thank you very much, and it was great. We had the police department that volunteered their time to be on hand for the spaghetti dinner because of the crowd control of those Women's Club members. So, I appreciate it.
Okay, city clerk report.
I'd just like to mention that I will be meeting with the deputy city clerk to review and possibly resolve issues brought up by public comment tonight regarding the June 2016 bank statement.
Okay, thank you. City attorney report.
Just briefly, I provided you with a confidential summary of some of the work that we've done for the city over the last month, and I just wanted to add to what the city clerk said. We had a discussion after the speaker that raised issues about wanting and requesting bank statements. And so, it's my understanding that they're voluminous, that, number one, let me first start by stating, as I did before, that this council went out and actually issued a legislative subpoena. We, I believe it was tens of thousands of pages of documents that we provided to Ms. Bingham on a thumb drive, and we gave them to her as soon as we had them. As soon as they could be redacted, the accounts could be redacted, the account numbers, we gave them to her. In addition, the city clerk's office has gone through these voluminous bank statements that Ms. Bingham spoke of, and is manually redacting the bank account numbers with the current trustee bank. Nicole Willwright spoke to the trustee bank institution about this concept that's been proposed by, by the speaker tonight of just turning over the documents with the bank account numbers, and the bank's response was absolutely not, you know, don't do that, for obvious, for obvious reasons. So, you know, that's, that's the delay, is redacting account numbers from those. Now, my understanding is also that the offer has been extended to Ms. Bingham to come to city hall to review them even before they're redacted. So, and the assistant city clerk and the clerk are nodding their head yes. So, that offer's been extended. We've tried to accommodate the request since it was made. We've offered to give her the opportunity to come down and review the documents, which she's entitled to, but she wants actual copies of them. And so, if we're going to release them out into the world, before we do so, we're redacting the account numbers, just as if, like any of us, if we were asked to put up on the internet a bank statement, we would not put our account numbers on, you know, for obvious reasons. So, anyway, that's, you know, that's what we were able to, I was able to find out after talking to the city clerk and assistant city clerk. So, the other thing is, I want to add that, you know, I understand that Ms. Bingham is frustrated and angry, and while we can't control that, we've always been, we've always tried to be very respectful to her in terms of respecting and defending her right to speak, even when she disagrees with something or takes issue with something. So, we try to be respectful to her, but when she makes statements that are inaccurate, you know, I think it is appropriate to call it out, and frequently, the comments that are made are intertwined with both accurate and inaccurate and false statements. And so, I think it is appropriate to, to point out when there are, when inaccurate information is provided to the council.
Just clarification, the thumb drive you gave them was back in 2016, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It was after we went through the, the process of issuing legislative subpoenas.
Okay. City manager report.
Highlight of the whole night, I'm sure.
No, the highlight is your evaluation afterwards.
It's going to be hard to top this.
Yeah, I guess so.
And I did some research into that golden eagle issue, and the most amazing thing about that is they're tracking them through their cell phones, through their smartphones. So, that's really the kind of the newest part of that process.
They don't text and fly, do they?
Oh, no, no.
I'm joking.
It's all virtual now, yeah. And then, I know there's been a number of questions out there, and I think y'all maybe have had some citizen contact as well. I know we have, and our special tax consultant has too. With regard to the prepayment program that y'all authorized a couple meetings ago, I talked to Richard Wall today to kind of get an update on where that is. So, we are scheduled, as of October 1, to go live with that prepayment information. So, we'll have it posted on our city website. We're scheduled October 1, so people can begin to go on the website and start to look up their information. So, that's all I have for you tonight.
Right. Thank you. With that, future agenda items. To make requests for future agenda items for closed session, do I do that in closed session or do that here?
The, the closed session, closed sessions are authorized under the Brown Act in limited situations. For example, labor negotiations, negotiations for the purchase or sale of a property, attorney-client privilege communication, city manager evaluations. We would disclose on the agenda what the item was that we were, that we were going to be meeting in closed session on, so.
Okay, so I think this falls in line. As you've told us in the public a number of times, you provide us with an actual summary of expenses by legal issue. And when I read through those, it generates questions that I have just sort of an update on these different, so I'm wondering if there's a way, maybe, it doesn't need to be done every month, but, you know, every other month that we go through that in closed session so that I can ask you about those different?
We, we can.
Or do you have to put each one of the?
We would have to put each case, and we can do that.
Could we do like two or three at a time?
In fact, in the past, what the city did was, on every closed session, it had every case listed, and that's, that's unusual.
Right.
Unless, it also sends the message to the community that you're going to be meeting in closed session on those cases, and they might show up here to make public comment on a case that you have no intent to discuss in closed session. So, the closed session, this agenda description should accurately advise the community of what you're going to be discussing in closed session that night, so they can decide whether they're going to come down here to city hall to make comment before you go into closed session, and so that they know what you're discussing in closed session. If you list all of the cases, all of the time, it, you know, I mean, in my opinion, it's misleading, because it's sending the message to the community that you're having discussions about each of those items when in fact you're not.
Okay.
So, I think the way that we are doing it is the, well, I know, is the right way, and it is the way that it's typically done. We go above and beyond that by then listing all of the cases every other, every other meeting.
I know you bring.
And I know we've missed a couple over the last two years.
Right.
Where the report hasn't been in there, because I was on vacation once, and there was, I think, another time, but we do our best to make sure that we regularly provide you with that list. But if there's a specific matter or case that you want to discuss in closed session, you can certainly just let the city manager know, and he, and we'll put it on the closed session agenda, and advertise.
Okay.
Or disclose to the community that we're going to be discussing that item.
I mean, it's more like, you bring to us the cases that we have to be aware of right now, for their, their pending cases, or their new cases, or they, they require some direction or some consent.
Correct.
But when I read through there, there's some cases where I'm like, yeah, I'm thinking to myself, boy, I wonder where we are on that one, with, you know, and I don't know how to, I mean, I guess I could just call you.
So, if you, if you let the city manager know that you want an update on a case that's pending, we can certainly put that on the agenda, we'll put it on the closed session agenda, and then the community knows that we're going to be discussing that item, and then we go into closed session, we'll give you an update on the case.
Okay. And just to, like you said, I don't want to overload with all these cases on, you know, on one closed session, so. Okay. Any other ideas for future agenda items? Okay. At that, we'll adjourn the meeting at, almost?
Can't adjourn it, because we're going back into closed session.
Oh, thank you.
And we have the employee, and that item is?
He thought he was going to.
It's the city manager evaluation, item five on the closed session that we didn't get to at the beginning of the meeting, and that's public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957B1, and the employee title is city manager. And then, we will come back out and report out of closed session after.
Okay. We'll head to closed session at 9:45.